President Powers recently purchased East End Road. And we're here before you because he went to apply for a building permit. And he was instructed that he needed your belief due to the nonperforming nature of the existing structure. We did outline in the application package, the existing structure is about 10 feet off of East End Road.
I guess while the application, we're getting this ready for display. Where we're dealing with a variance again for the viewing audience. I guess Chapter 48 of the last Jumbo Law deals with variances and sort of the key items that would be expected from the applicant or their agent to present is to provide a hardship or associated with the proposal. Identify specific circumstances related to the topography or the property itself. Determine why the desired relief is not substantial detriment to the public good and also why desired relief is not nullified or substantially terminated by the bylaws. So you can address those as well later.
Absolutely. So the existing house, number three, East End Road, is shown right here. The property is fairly deep, but also very narrow. And along the northerly edge of the property, there are some bordering vegetated wetlands. Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions related to the replacement of the septic system. The house and the proposed addition are located entirely outside of the wetland buffer zone. Relocating the house to another portion of the property would likely put it into the wetland buffer zone or too close to the wetlands. So we deem that the house in its present position is appropriate. It's also a very old house. Historic Commission, right before the meeting, we were handed a letter that they were urging you to act favorably on this for the preservation of the house. We're spanning the back of the house. Proposed addition is shown right here. Its visibility from East End Road would be limited due to the other outbuildings in the barn on the property. From Main Street, the property line is right here, but the Main Street right away is actually, well, right away is up to the property line, obviously. But the pavement is quite a bit further away. There's an older road layout that used to come closer to the house. So we're only able to provide a 34 to 40-foot setback on the Main Street side. The actual distance to the edge of pavement is almost 80 feet. So in protecting the view and the interest of the bylaw, we do have some mature vegetation along there. There could really be limited view of the addition on the back of the house there. We did present some pictures within our application package. And I think that demonstrates to how the proposed addition would really have limited view from the public right away.
Can you give square footage of the house? Is it two-bedroom house? Do you know the square footage of the existing house?
Well, it's roughly 16 by 32. So they're proposing pretty much the...
The square footage of the existing house is about 1600 square feet?
Yeah, 15, 40, yeah. Depending, not including the entranceway that's set up with the porch. No, on the driveway side, the kitchen. It was the kitchen.
And the Board of Health has approved. It's perfectly accessible. That'll be removed. And we're putting in a Title V compliance system that's rated for four bedrooms.
So how much is the addition if it's less than 100%?
Yes.
And we did include in our application package, Mr. Powers has spoken to his neighbors. In the application package, there's a letter that's been signed by them that indicates that they really don't believe this would be detrimental to the neighborhood. And also included, we referenced Section 2.1.3.3 of the bylaw, which allows for the extension of pre-existing nonperforming properties, which just falls into that category.
So we, the package, one of the reference items you said was a letter from the Butters. So I can see who the Laurie Stevenson's? Is that John Stevenson? Who are the other?
Looks like four out of the six.
Yeah, it is a part of a commercial property to the east.
Four out of the six are represented. One of them is, I don't know if it's Massachusetts, it's not there. The other one is the commercial property period.
Can I answer any specifics related to the application?
Is the addition two stories?
It is, yes. It'll match the existing house.
And then again, it stays within the footprint, doesn't crush it closer to the...
No, we're not increasing that degree of nonperforming anyway.
Is there a drawing of what it will look like?
We do have a couple conceptual renderings of it. Mr. Powers hasn't had full architectural plans done yet, just because he wanted to make sure that...
I have a frame lined up and hopefully, you know, we'll talk with the, in the right amount of time, we can do post-me and keep it exposed beams, because that's how it is.
Is it formidable?
Yeah. And the roof structure, we haven't completely dialed in yet.
The closed walls are coming ready?
So it'd be a kitchen on the ground floor and then bedrooms?
Correct. Correct. With an honestly back for the addition as well. And then that's one of the renderings to match up the existing roof line, although that's not finalized yet. That would be the view from the barn side of the property. And again, the visibility of that from Route 117, Main Street, would be fairly limited due to the mature vegetation along that side. And that's to remain.
You're just going to shit out the roof lines basically without...
Yeah, that's the plan. Match the existing range.
The Historical Commission support also made a comment about requesting a number of trees that are lost or... Lendings, do you want to comment on that?
There's no tree loss proposed with the addition. The septic system, the trees that would be lost, the septic system is offset from the property line, so that would be more towards the interior of the property. But that vegetative buffer along Main Street right away is to remain.
And even the two trees, there's a nice red pine there that we might do a retaining wall. I want to put my septic items over there, just to save that. It's just, it gives nice shade.
The plan also indicates the location of some of the specimen trees along that view angle there.
So, in the audience is Martha Irvington, and she's with Historical Commission, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have one question. Martha Irvington, Main Street, Chairman of Historical Commission. The legal notice said seeking variance from front yard setback. And when I looked at the plans, it seemed to me it was variance from side yard setback. Is there anything that's going to be further front on East End Road than it is now?
No. And the property actually has, it has two fronts, because it fronts on both Main Street and on East End Road.
Right, but from the house's perspective, it's front road, East End, side road, Main Street. Side setback is 20. I'm not arguing with this, I'm just saying, I thought this was a bit confusing. Anyway, the Historical Commission is so pleased that this building is going to have occupants. We are very much in support of this.
So the trees that they just spoke about, the specimen that are, the ones you were referring to in your...
Yeah, the ones, they're from Main Street, but the old road, which is closer to the house, there's a substantial amount of buffer there, which the occupants are going to also be thankful to keep. Because it's right on Main Street. And so it's just a nice green space, even though it's got the old black pine from way there.
We do appreciate it, it's a great lot. Thank you very much.
The only trees that, there are some skeptical ones that have had acorn come out that would be dangerous. There's some black locusts that are looking kind of, you know, suspect. That's anything, you know, safety wise, obviously, that would be the only tree that you would be doing. And there's a white pine that's right up next to the garage, which really isn't doing anything to the structure of it. You've seen that one probably. But in the future of that, that's the only thing though. But we're not clear-cutting anything. I like all the trees.
To reiterate your point where there's no change in front of the side of the house, we're focused on it.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And then also another thing is, like, I'm not, this isn't a flip for me and my family to live in.
And that's even better.
Yeah. And my dad's president of the Historic Commission up in Vermont. And you wouldn't let me do anything.
So it's like the hardship that, I mean, literally, if you had to do something else with a property, I mean, you'd be hopping with something differently.
You'd be either relocating the house, constructing a new house, and that would require additional approvals from Conservation Commission.
There are also substantial costs for the...
Substantial, yeah.
And, actually, Seth's probably going to tell me to shut up. We probably would leave it as bigger than what we've, we have a renovation loan, so we have to show, we've got a good, pretty good deal on it, but me doing all the work myself, and we have to show, I'd be fine with how it is now. I love it. And that's why we're not, we're not pouring a slab, or we're going to, we're going to do mostly sonotubes, so we don't disrupt the original foundation. And then, but we have to show a 20% equity. I can't do that out of a two-bedroom, you know? And that's what's, so, I'm within those guidelines of the, with the renovation loan.
And certainly, the town would suffer hardship if the Nathan Brooks House was demolished and replaced with something. Thank you.
I think I'm all set. Any final? Any final? Close motion?
Close hearing or?
Close to public, okay. Do first a motion, close to the public?
Okay, make a motion, close to public hearing.
Second. All in favor of the motion, close to public hearing? Motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. And so, so I'll propose a motion that we grant the applicant's request for variance for the proposed addition to the dwelling located in the residential zoning district at 3 East End Road, in substantial component of the application. And with the condition that take, we do consideration, both in the Historic Commission's letter for tree preservation as best as possible.
I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
I appreciate your time.
How am I going to heat my house?
Oh, no, I know. I'm just...
Next time I'll be coming past, we'll ask for variance quick. It's very nice to see you over.
Nice to meet you.
What's that? Jones, yeah. I'm on the story room.
What's that?
I'm on the story room.
Where on still...
116. So it's the one that's back high towards water. It's two houses from the factory. What's that?
So we're looking at Factory National 3.
No, it's 117. They're 117 and 110 across, I think.
So you have a house down...
No, I don't. The next house has one. We're way back. We're, you know, those little hammock blocks. That's in the back. We're going to be hopefully putting a solar system in there. Just trying to get everything right. Thank you, gentlemen. It was very informative. It was good.
We're just a new guest board.
Unless you've seen it, you don't know that. All right. Thank you so much. You have a long day. Long day.
Bye, John. So I guess the next business item would be an update on the closeout of Sunset Ridge.
Yeah, I figured since the board was meeting, it was a good time to kind of touch on the projects that you guys oversee. So Sunset Ridge, I believe the last time you met, you did talk about the closeout of that project. So I met out in the field, Jack Sargent, Steve Adreska from Niche Engineering, the developer, as well as a resident from Sunset Ridge on September 20th, to go through all the closeout items. This essentially, this email just sort of summarizes sort of the remaining, based on what we saw out in the field, there were some remaining items that still needed to be taken care of. And so that email sort of outlines what those items are. I didn't know if you wanted to go through them or...
So is there another request to release the remaining 15?
Not yet, no. This is just an update that we're going to do one more site visit to check to the remaining items. And then at that point, likely the developer will come forward and request the remaining bond be released.
Is there any indication of when this will be completed?
Not really. I'm assuming sometime this fall. We didn't really agree to, you know, a time at the meeting.
I know your request is something as of August, the last meeting, I think August was going to be it.
We wanted to wrap it up.
Wrap it up by the end of August. Oh, it's August 1st?
That's what this letter says.
Yeah, I think it was, end of July.
It was, yeah. The developer did take stuff and close out the project. It's just when we were out in the field, there were some things that came up that he agreed to fix, you know, in addition to the items that he did correct, so.
It would be nice to get it completed.
Oh, yeah. So I know this gentleman, you were one of the Butters, correct?
That'd be me.
In your name?
Stan DeBurst, 53 Sunset Ridge.
So did you attend the site, the walk they did?
Yes, I did.
And did you see progress?
Very little.
Very little, okay. And with the action items that Eric indicated, he inferred that there's some things that he was going to do in addition to that, were those, get over the hurdle of wrapping that up in your mind?
In my mind, no. In your mind, no.
Well, may, may not.
In my mind, there's a lot of discrepancies from the initial decision and plan in the field, which the engineer disagrees with. I mean, there are sewer drain pipes stick out of the ground that's supposed to be in ground covered, zloty grading issues, incomplete berm backfill, general cleanup.
So is that a difference of opinion or is it...
I think it's a difference of opinion. You know, I, Niche Engineering, you know, they've gone out there, they've done the site visits, and they're saying that the pressure is in substantial performance, what the plan is essentially what we're looking for. So, you know, and the developer did agree to kind of take care of these last remaining items that, you know, that aren't, you know, they're not imperative, but he said he would correct them, so.
And when you say, do we have a timeframe?
No, we did not, we did not agree on a timeframe. He just said that, you know...
Because all of a sudden it'll be...
So all of a sudden it's been done now, correct?
For us, it'll be underground soon, and then it...
If the board wants to come to a decision on a date, I can relay that to the developer and say, you know...
Well, I think at some point, we have to just fish that bait, either take the $15,000 and complete it, or whatever.
So when do the, when is the 15th? Was it like November 15th? They usually stop...
Yeah, depends on the year.
For cuts and stuff like that, inroads and things like that. I guess depending, can we say, when we propose this, it gives them basically another month?
Yeah, I would say, that's my opinion. Sometime maybe the end of, end of November would be the cutoff. I'd give a month from the end of October, I'll be generous, but, you know...
That was when the Jeffersons say November 15th. You're busy on other things and you get distracted and you...
Right, nothing's going to happen in December, January, February.
Or maybe the week of Thanksgiving and everything, so.
All right, 15th is fine.
Are there any issues of public safety around these discrepancies? I can't ask you for my opinion.
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Well, I'm sure that Niche would shortly identify that.
They would, yeah.
They understand that it has to be a safe environment.
Unfortunately, Jack Sargent isn't here tonight, because he was a member of the board that was a present at that meeting. And, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but he seemed to think that these items were minor as well, so.
When you do the next sidewalk or the final sidewalk, that is, they can do it. Neither, because time-wise, it's, you know, where I work, I'll be elevated. So it's hard to get... But if it's either later, to the later in the day, or if it head from work to here and then sort of end versus, you know, middle.
Yeah, sure.
Is that a possibility?
Well, it could be, yeah, I guess we, but if they start to do it on a work week, it would either end, that allows a little flexibility for those that work to get it.
Yeah, sure. Since it's later in the season, it may be better to do it early in the morning, because it's later at night, because it'll be dark at that point. But I certainly make requests that we meet like 8 o'clock, work at 7 o'clock, work at whatever, you know, for the board. 8 o'clock? Okay. I'll do that.
If I may, from a safety standpoint, I don't believe the way the sidewalk dumps out, I mean, uphill, inside corner is safe, the snow banks and kids walking back up the hill. Because if Sunset Ridge comes up and turns around, the sidewalk comes up about three quarters of way and dumps out onto the inside of the uphill corner of the street. So potentially with snowbank, a child would not see cars coming down the hill. The engineer's opinion is the sidewalk is never approved, so it's not there.
So it wasn't in the plans?
Oh, it's in the landscaping plans. Eric could probably better answer it.
I can try and find that landscape. I think it was shown on the landscape plan, it's not shown on the comprehensive permit plan.
So it's more detail in the plans and it wasn't comprehensive, but it makes sense, because they're going to have to have all the final plans drawn in that to get the permits.
So I don't know whether or not the board agreed or, you know, recommended that there be a sidewalk that goes down to water aquatic. I'm not sure what the deliberation on that was.
But in any respects, Niche would have had to probably at least look, see it and make sure that it's safe, right? So are they, have they looked forward to say, okay, in the winter or at the end of the year, ice, you know, that will be proper?
You know, we haven't talked about that specifically. I'm trying to remember myself when we were out there. So the concern is that at the top...
Do you know the turn? In the center of the turn, the sidewalk turns out into it. Before any houses.
I can't recall. I'd have to go back out and take a look at it, I'll be honest with you.
So what would you see as a proposed solution? Would you like to see, just that you're asking? Well, I think from a safety standpoint, it should be brought up beyond the corner where the plan shows it. So what the...
The plan?
The landscaping plan shows sidewalk.
Okay.
And I believe that's the approved landscaping plan.
So it shows the sidewalk not coming out to the road?
It shows it coming further than it does here.
So it just stops at the top of the hill?
Well, it turns out into the street, yes. It's not at the top of the hill, it's the center of the hill, the center of the park.
I think, is it because there's a driveway there, is that the reason why it's that? It stops not at the top, it's sort of slightly down from the top because of the driveway?
It's like 80 feet below the driveway.
Is it 80? Okay.
What is the material of the sidewalk made of?
Asphalt.
This is asphalt. I haven't been up there for a month. So we need a sidewalk, I think it's important.
Well, the same is true to the closeout, but, I mean, there's money there. I mean, it's the applicant's money in bond at the moment, but if we should ask, or if you're talked to, if you could ask them...
If you think it feels as a safety concern?
Or just confirm that the, as it is constructed versus the plan, because if they're saying things are in substantial performance of the plans, if the landscape plan shows something 80 feet longer, and it's not there, then maybe that's not substantial performance. Maybe that's a gray definition, but...
I think the explanation that Eric gave me is that the sidewalk was never approved by the ZDA.
To be honest with you...
Therefore, it doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I had to go back and look. I mean, we talked about this probably at least a year ago, so I just, I can't remember now at this point.
So is the sidewalk issue on the list? Last time we, we had a lengthy list of things that needed to be addressed.
I believe it was on the list. If it wasn't, it was on a number of communications between Eric and I.
It may have been on the list from Stan, but it was never on the list from Niche Engineering. And Niche Engineering is the direction that I take.
I know, I was just trying to, at the previous meeting, we were trying to address the concerns as they were brought up in writing. So I'm just trying to decide whether this is something new or something we actually looked at.
Whether I put it on my list or not, I don't know, because I was already told, it doesn't matter. If it wasn't shown on the comprehensive plan, it's not there.
What I can do is I'll take a look back through my emails, because I'm assuming I probably emailed back and forth with Steven on this, on this issue. And I can forward any correspondence I have regarding the sidewalk to you. And I can also find that landscape.
Do you have the PDF of the proposed plan?
I don't know if I have a PDF of the landscape plan. But I certainly could take a picture of it.
Take a look at it or something.
Or I can try and get it now.
I'll try to get it, get up there tomorrow and take a look. Where, is this on the main road going up or... Yes. Okay. And it's on the left-hand or the right-hand side? Left-hand side. Okay. I'll try to take a look.
So what is the point of it? Whatever's there currently, that's not done, it's safe.
Sure.
And then we can see, you know, the feedback on it, but just be sure that, you know, I don't want to underestimate that there is a concern or not a concern, but...
Sure, sure. I can, I can, I can check with Niche Engineering. And I think also what might be beneficial is to check with the homeowners, or the condo association, to get their input on this, whether or not they feel it's a concern.
Well, until the snow's high and some kid steps up there and the car's coming down the hill. Until someone steps up from behind the snowbank, it's not a concern. Is that maintained by the condo association during the winter, is that sidewalk... The street, yeah. Yeah. But the banks of snow get high just like on the town street. Yeah, I just wonder if they plow the sidewalks. We shovel them. Okay.
Well, I mean, say, if it's, if there's a safety issue, we need, let's find out and let's hear about it, because at the end of the day, you know, we're, we have to care about safety. But we also, you know, we rely on our, the technical resource that has been, you know, put in place for the peer review, and that's it. So they're engineers, they have people that can tell me that it's unsafe or safe.
Is there a public ways committee in town?
There was.
This isn't a public way, though.
No, it's a treaty, which is, I'm not sure. If it were the planning board, there wouldn't be a problem, but I'm not sure how far we can go.
Yeah.
And enforcing.
Right.
And they waive all these bylaws.
So, and they waive all these bylaws, so that, you know, you kind of.
But, but if these, but if the Alpkins put, develop the piece of it, done something and it's not done proper. And that's what we can address if it's, if what they've done is, is fine. And then they say, well, it's an interpretation, yes, anything could be safe or unsafe, we could slip on anything or not. But if it's, if they say, yes, it really could be done better, it wasn't done right, then, well, let's hear that or not.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I can certainly look at that information.
The other end directly across from that area is the grading that was to be shown on the second plan. The grading does not come, show on the plan to where it was questioned.
In the front of the building?
No, I mean, coming up on the other side of that corner, there was a question of whether the slope was too great, from six point five to seven point five.
Would it, the, or if I grab plans, it's, it's hard.
We didn't like the same list we had last time.
Like, you know, this is about almost six years now.
Right.
About five years past completion date.
But the good news is we put a November fifteenth date on it.
Yeah.
We won't have any more of this.
Depends how much fifteen thousand is worth of.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's not fifteen thousand all worth of work there to do.
I don't think so.
Guys just don't get money. We can't get them to come up and finish this.
Well, we'll put a stake in the sand and see what happens.
Okay, and where is it dump out now?
I said it left dumps out right here.
So there's, so downhill, there's a diff, there's a difference from this amount from here to there.
So I'm just saying, if you have snow uphill, and a child steps out there, you know, the snowbank, there's a potential.
Seems odd that they didn't just continue it.
Right, so, let's find out.
I mean, I do think it's a little odd that it was only shown on the landscape plan.
Well, which, we didn't, we didn't approve this, you're saying?
I, I, I honestly don't remember. I have to go back to the emails, since, cause I, not knowing the history of this project, I think I relied on Mitch Engineering to give me background on the sidewalk.
Well, probably the original permit, probably was much less.
No, this was in the original.
Much less detailed.
Yeah, with less detail, at least had, you know, substantial conformity of the, the plan.
This is a benefit, this is actually a process. Quite frankly, I mean, they don't have to file everything upfront, they just come in with some concepts and then sort of it evolves, and yeah.
My next point was the sidewalk wasn't really required for subdivision, this sucks. So, but the point is, it's there.
Right.
And I am also wondering too, cause, you know, they, they had our landscape architect to put this plan together, did they just slap on a sidewalk because it sort of goes with the aesthetics of the landscape? And, oh, well, let's put a sidewalk here, so I'm just wondering.
The fact that they put one, right?
If you, if you look back through the meeting minutes when this was approved, and the comprehensive plan, there was numbers of discussions between the board regarding this plan.
Was there any discussion? Do you remember seeing any discussion on the sidewalk?
That the sidewalk was going to be incorporated in the landscaping plan, yes.
I'm not sure if you, I'm not even sure if it left, that was on, I want to, probably here, if it's on.
Where, actually probably down off, you know, the street plan, if you're looking for the grading.
I, I didn't know if this was the grading you were talking about.
No, no, it's, it's up here where there was a question by Mitch Engineering regarding the slope. That's the street plan. If you ever have it.
I don't have heard anything yet, so at this time, I only have electronic.
So, this, so seven point five to six point five, there was a question on this slope.
The slope of the road or this?
The slope from the road down into the septic system.
Okay.
Whether it was more than three to one.
Okay.
And Mitch asked if the grading would be shown on the asphalt plan. The grading shown on the asphalt plan only comes to half of the length that it was questioned on, and this is the place where it may be too steep.
Was this, okay, I'd have to go back and look. Was this a recent request from Mitch Engineering?
No, it was in the fourteen, that was revised asphalt that we were questioning.
Cause Mitch Engineering basically approved the asphalt, so I might have to go back and kind of figure out where they, they stood on the grading.
Well, it was to, the grading was to be determined and shown on the asphalt. And it is not.
I, I'll have to come back with Mitch Engineering on that.
And so if it isn't, and it has to be shown, then just.
Well, they just need to shoot a few more breaks to find out whether the guardrail has to go back in or not. At all.
So there was a guardrail there or?
The guardrail was in the initial plan, and the ZVA allowed the guardrail, a section of it, to be removed if there was a council. Mitch Engineering reviewed in July fourteen, questioned the slope, asked it to be shown on the plans to confirm that it met the requirement.
So it's what the guardrail wants now?
Yeah, and one of the plans, I guess, showed it up here, so the, off this drop, you know, back off the hill. So this was to be flattered, to prevent that from happening.
You'd cheaper to put a guardrail on.
Yeah, that's the great.
Yeah, either way, I'm saying Mitch, Mitch raised the question, not I. In my opinion, it was not answered on the asphalt.
So if he, if the grade's proper, and he just has to show it on the asphalt, if he hasn't.
Right.
So if you just ask that question.
Sure.
And then nothing else on that list, no. Again, three strikes.
All right, so I will follow up with the developer and let him know that we have an end date for November fifteenth. And actually, before that, I'll get in contact with Mitch to find out about the sidewalk and about this grading area.
And, 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 you know, just tell him that we need to know now if he believes that's a unreasonable date, because you can't wait till close to it, then have another, oh, well, someone came up, I can't get enough, cause.
Sorry.
To the point, yeah, this project's been going on a long time. We should, should just get out there.
My last question, is that Erica's on the cost study?
He, um, he was working on it the last time I contacted him. The, the, the cost for the, for the development.
His total cost for it?
Yeah. But I, I don't have that information yet.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan, thank you. You're leaving. So is that, there's some trouble with it, you're up there at the moment?
There's some questions, yeah. There were two things. Um, perhaps in the village, I've written on farm on Sugar Road. So they're currently in construction. There were two field changes this summer and this fall that I wanted to just bring to the board's attention. The first one is in your packet, there was a letter from DPW. Essentially, what had happened was they did some grading within the road right of way, where DPW uses that for snow storage in the winter. So they just had to ask the developer if he could move that grading out, and in doing so, it tweaked the detention basin that's right there next to Sugar Road. They had to reduce the basin height, the, the berm, the berm height of the basin, and in doing that, then they had to tweak the electric structure to make sure that it could still hold a hundred year storm event, so, um, everything worked out fine. It still needs mast, D E P, stormwater rigs. So essentially, this is that letter saying, okay, you know, DPW, that's what they did out there, they're good. The developer's good, the stormwater's fine. So that was, that was the field change that occurred back in September.
And, uh, and from what I've seen or heard, seems like Mark Grohagen has been very accommodating or.
Very, he's been great to work with. They just, I don't know about recent, you guys have been on Sugar Road, but they've essentially completed that, that the first stage.
Yeah.
And they just recently did plantings along Sugar Road.
Yeah, right, and they just put that, the grass seed in or whatever.
Yeah, it's just coming up pretty good.
It is. Yeah.
And I actually toured some of the, the two different styles of homes there, they're nice, yeah, so.
Are they all tunnels, or was some single family, right?
Well, they're all, they're all single family.
I thought there was.
There's no attached, yeah, they're all single family. But they feel like that, a townhome when you walk, you know. Then the, the other field change was over the summer. Mark contacted me, we went out to the fields. There was a set of stairs that they were supposed to put in, but when they actually built the buildings, there was space constraint. So he just said, look, you know, I'm gonna take these stairs out, it shouldn't be an issue. There's another set of stairs not that far down that people can access to get to the area, that common area. It didn't seem like, you know, an issue, that was the other, the other field change. So that area is now just a very pretty stone retaining wall.
Is, is that something that requires approval, or the field change?
Stairs, the field change? I don't believe so.
Okay, I was just, I was, I went out and walked it tonight, I saw that, the, the whole thing is completed, and there's obviously no stairs there, so I didn't know. They're like asking retroactively for approval?
No, they weren't, no, no, they, they are not. I, I consider that a field change, and in the future, if that's something that you're concerned with, I can certainly bring it to the board. At the time, it didn't seem, you know, it seemed more just like a field change, because they did have a space constraint, they thought there was a set of stairs not that far down.
It would be pretty steep, the way that it's got it built up now.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, again, it's, it's a substantial inconformity to have one stair versus two, I don't worry, you know, that's the big, you know, leading. They don't just change.
Where would the stairs go down to?
Down to the parking area, or the, the driveway area, so I circled sort of where, it's actually hard to see it even on the plans. Like, I, I had to look at it twice to even remember that there were stairs there.
It seems like the stairs there really benefit unit fourteen, but had they been put in, because that's where unit fourteen's garage is, and and the stairs would lead up to unit fourteen's front door, basically.
Right.
So I'm not sure who would be using those stairs, other than.
Not really, I don't think anyone, yeah, I think it really is just building fourteen, and now the way that it's designed, you know, the resident at building fourteen, they either can go in the garage, go in that way. Or there is a side door on this, you know, on the, this, the side of the house closest to Sugar Road. So they do have two access points there, or they could go around and use the, the other stairs that are, um, I believe between these two garages here and go up and around to the other side.
I'll take me what I see, so far, because on that, on that project, I said it, Andy, I think when he was doing it earlier. But for the fact that you forget how close it is to the road.
It is very close to the road.
But that's what was proved, so they haven't done any, they shouldn't do, but it is, but they're well done, it looks like.
I did receive quite a few complaints about the number of trees that were taken down.
Oh, yeah.
Cause it is a scenic road, so I did get a lot of complaints saying, you know, how could they, how let them do this? But they, you know, and I relayed that to Mark, that people were pretty upset that they removed all the trees, and he said, you know, we'll try and do some of that landscaping sooner. And they have, they, you know, they've gone out there and they planted those trees, so.
Yeah, down to the.
It's very accommodative.
Yeah.
The problem with a lot of those trees, they're really old, halfway dilapidated white pines anyways. They weren't like nice looking trees, but I, but I understand, I know what people, cause all of a sudden it was just wide open space there. It was a pretty thickly.
Right, but to do the forty B in the units there, it's not, like, you really have the opportunity that, you know, I mean, they are going to do landscaping, they're going to make it nice, but yeah, it's hard to, for, do your project if you have to keep.
Right.
Work around every.
Right, and I, I explained that to the residents at the hall, that they told them, you know, this was an affordable house, you know, this was through forty B and, so.
I noticed that the, the garage units seventeen and eighteen are built with a, a flat top, which is like a, sort of an entertainment deck. Do you know whether that's intended for unit seventeen and eighteen alone, or for the entire development to use?
I believe it's for the entire development.
Interesting.
Yeah, Mark.
They built a garage, and then they built like this.
Top, I saw that.
Yeah, it's like, sort of like a barbecue, family barbecue area.
Yeah, cause Mark, Mark pointed that out to me. Apparently, that was very expensive to build. In retrospect, he's like, yeah, this was actually very expensive.
Well, the forty B basically doesn't give you a lot of leverage on, on those type of things, doesn't, I mean, as far as. They pretty much submit a plan. My understanding of what, what's he submit a, a plan pretty much, and other than public safety and and public health issues, you pretty much have to accept it, so.
Well, they can be aggressive in, in, in anticipate that that's all you can do, but you can negotiate.
No, you can negotiate.
In, in conditions and, you know, back and forth, so that's what we did on, on this one.
Right.
Yeah, and if you have a motivated, willing, you know, rational developer, which Mark seems to exhibit on many projects we've seen on. Yeah, he's pretty reasonable on, yeah, that makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, you.
How many is there, twenty-eight?
Uh, there are thirty.
Thirty.
So, but I think even on his projects, he is a good design eye.
Yeah.
So I think it's gonna look good at the end of the day, but.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's an accelerated process and, you know.
You know, there was a lot of discussion on, you know, saving, you know, stone walls, or saving whatever landscape that was, you know, mature and, and healthy and, and screening at some point for neighbors and, you know, so I'm sure it's all gonna come together.
So I think that's it.
Okay.
So there, more than likely, there won't be another application for variance from the gentleman you met tonight, so he'll have to coordinate schedules again. He'll be out there and ask me if it will be.
Is that a single family?
No, he's looking to put up solar, ground mounted solar panels, and he has a backland lot, so he needs to be fifty feet from the property lines. But he has got significant wetlands on his property, he's got a stream running along the backside of it, so he wants to move it closer, so.
He's kinda, it's not gonna be attached to the building.
No, no, it's gonna be ground mounted in its own little area, yeah.
Hey, can I make a request?
Sure.
When that, um, Sunset Bridge comes up again for the, for the fifteen thousand dollar release, can we get, in the, whatever package you were distributing, can we get that entire list that we addressed last time?
Exactly, I, I thought I, this was it.
I know, it's much longer.
The red line.
There must have been seventeen or eighteen things that we read out and had them both. No, just so, cause, I thought at that time, here's, here's the final things that we had to go over, and I was surprised that he's back again seemingly bringing us other concerns, so. I always kind of had the impression, this is it, once we get these things in, we're done, so.
Okay.
So if that could be in the package for us to review and.
Was that, was that the, um, the review that Niche Engineering did in two thousand fourteen?
It was, it was something that, that Stan presented, right?
Stan had a letter, it was.
Was it from Niche Engineering?
They had their input on it, because they showed up, and who was here that we walked through, was it?
Was it?
So Bill was here, correct, at that last meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Was there someone from Niche?
I was like, we were over the home.
Right, was Steve and Fresca here?
I'm trying to remember.
Because I know that.
And he walked through it with us, and, wasn't there a representative from Niche here that?
I think so.
Yes, so.
Because my experience has been that Niche Engineering, Stephen has had a running list, and Stan, as a resident, has had a running list. I also feel that the condo association should be weighing in on the things that Stan's requesting, because just because he's requesting it, may not necessarily be what the.
That'd be great.
That's what I, that's why I get a little bit, I get a little cautious.
If I recall, Stan was here one time and started talking about things, and I didn't even know what he was talking about, and I encouraged him to bring a list to the next meeting.
The way that.
And so he submitted that list, and I thought, okay, this is it, we're addressing what's on the list, and that's.
Okay, because the way that I.
Because when we voted to bring it to the fifteen thousand, that was because the list was defined, and we had agreed on, Mark, Alpkins agreed, okay, yeah, I'll take care of this, I'll take care of this, take care of this, and we had that obvious date, so.
And, and Niche Engineering was familiar with that list?
Yes.
Stephen, I thought, okay, so the red here is not the list?
That's, I'm pretty sure the list that we were addressing.
This is who had sent me, but I, okay, because he.
It, it should have been in the documents that related to that meeting, hopefully.
Yeah, right, because his, this is part of his, because here, he, he, he noticed, specifically addresses the fact that we released thirty-four thousand, we kept fifteen, so, and that they have the date that we told, so this is some.
I'm surprised that this isn't the list, because this is what he sent me.
No, I think it was more lengthy than this, because it took me forever to go, I was reading out every, every line I had, it took me, seemed like forever to go through every single thing on the list.
Well, yeah, and he just called out the eight or nine things that never left over to do, and is that possibly what this is?
Yeah, I think that's what it is, I mean.
Because I don't know, I'm just wondering, you might have that list that you were talking about, was it in your packet that evening?
Yes.
Or was this something that Stan brought to the meeting?
Yeah, it was in the packet.
It was in the packet.
Okay.
When we walked through.
I'll, I'll contact Stephen and see if, if it was a longer list and some of those other items just got completed, that's why he narrowed it down to these items that are in red.
I think we sent it in a PDF.
When was that meeting, is that May, I can't remember.
I believe that was in May.
Well, this is the original list from May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, ZVA here.
So we gave him two months to complete the work.
Right.
He hasn't completed the work.
So May thirty-first was the, sort of in, in, or about that time it was.
He believed, you know, in all honesty, I think Ben did think he completed the list, it's just when we were out there, new things sort of popped up, or some additional things, or things weren't done to the satisfaction of Stan, and, and, and Niche agreed, okay, yes, let's try and, you know, Ben, can you fix this, that's kind of how it played out, and Ben said, yeah, I'll, I'll take care of that, so. Like, just as an example, like the crack ceiling along the driveways, he corrected the ones that were called out by Niche Engineering, but then when we were out there, we saw that there were some other driveways that had some cracking, so Ben said, you know what, I'll just take care of those two, so then they got added to a new list.
Right, I remember talking about that at the meeting, saying, this cracking's just gonna continue to go on and on and on, it's just inevitable.
And to finish the project, we moved on, or, or they took it, but Janet signed up, and he, right, so.
The way that I've been handling it up till now is, you know, I know Stan, and he sort of made comments that he had sent me different things over the past year or two, I send that, I coordinate that with Niche, and if Niche doesn't add it to their list, I go by Niche, so, that's, that's kind of how it's.
I think at the time, I was just trying to address it logically, methodically, and say, give me a list, we'll talk about each of them, and then we'll move on, hopefully, and so that's why I want to make sure we're comparing this, and he's not bringing up new things, because I really don't want to address new things unless it's something that is a safety issue, or is clearly different than what we approved to begin with.
Yep, sure.
Looks so.
Okay, that was good.
Move it to adjourn?
I moved it to adjourn, evening.
Second, second. Okay, so, are all of them adjourned?
If I say no. You don't vote it.